Next up on our agenda is Communications and Petitions. First off, the July 3rd Independence Day Parade. I don't know if Sam is here. You're not seeing Dave? Do you want to say anything quick about that?
He is not. I think the big thing there is we are still accepting entries for the parade. And we'll be in downtown Hillsdale, our typical route, starting at 6:00 PM on Thursday, July 3rd. Additional information is in the packet in regards to that.
Also, under Communications, letter B, is the Summer Concert Series for this year, presented in Mrs. Stock's Park, except for one, the second week on July 1st, the Hillsdale Wind Symphony under the direction of Dr. Robert Livingston, I presume, will be at the Howard Music Building up in Hillsdale College. It just seems to work better for the wind symphony to be out there where they practice anyway. But the rest of the concerts, the other six concerts, will start June 24th and run through August 5th, and they are free to all, start at 7:30 from lunch or blanket. Listen to NWCSR and watch Facebook in the event of a change of venue in case of weather. Letter C is our normal visit from Doug Ingles, who could not be here tonight. He did pass along though a quick email saying, "Gentlemen, I am out of town and will not be attending tonight's meeting, but my commissioner update is as follows. Hillsdale County is in the right of referendum period and in the process to issue a 2025 capital improvement bond, better known as a limited tax general obligation bond for the Lifeways project. The right of referendum period expires on July 7th. On July 8th, the schedule for bond process shows, quote, "Bond authorizing resolution adopted at regular board meeting," end quote, as described by the municipal advisor and bond counselor." Just an update on how that is progressing. Any questions, comments, concerns? Contact either Doug or any of the other four county commissioners or attend their next meeting. Letter D that we added for tonight, and this is the FOIA appeal from Keela Ward. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you. Yes, and this is just a notice, an official notice, that she has filed an appeal to the amount that she was charged for the FOIA, which was $57. And that is what she's appealing to reduce or counsel to allow her to not have to pay for FOIA. And that will be on the next meeting for July 7th.
Okay, appreciate that, sir. Thank you very much. Any other commissioners or Communications, petition, councilman Soha? Are you on liberty to say what the FOIA was about at this time?
It was a FOIA for, that went through the police department on a, that she was a victim of a crime.
Is there a way, Katie or Dave, that along with that for the next meeting, could we, for at least council, have a breakdown, like I've been worried, on how much we charge for FOIAs, how that breakdown is per hour or per page or whatever it is? Can we have that, please?
Yes, and we can have that on our website as well, and I'll be happy to put that back for the next meeting.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, next up on our agenda tonight is the introduction and adoption ordinances in public hearings. We have none tonight, so we will move on. Next is old business. Seeing as we have none, or do we have old business? Oh, yes, we did. Okay, I got the wrong copy. So, we do have old business, and tonight that would be the Public Safety Hearing on Camp Hope that was held in May. Councilman Soha?
Thank you. Chair Flynn, I asked Dave to move this and put it under old business because of the, what was said at the meeting, and I wanted us to discuss it as a council and for the public to understand. So, I'm just going to mark the notes here. And I also, there's something I'll add at the end that I wanted to make sure the community knows about. So, we had the Public Safety Meeting on May 22nd, yeah. And we had a few people come in from the Alboron Apartments and made some statements about what their lifestyle had been over the last two years since Camp Hope opened, and they were pretty shocking in their revelation. Now, I do appreciate Missy and the letter that she sent. I have here, forgive me. So, she hired a representative from Orkin to do a study, and he was adamant that during this inspection, he didn't find any evidence of rodents on the property in the second paragraph. This will be added to the minutes of the meeting. But at the same time, I did want council to know that the residents of the Alboron Apartments are very upset with the relationship that's happening there. They don't feel like Missy's been a good neighbor from what they suggested or stated at the Public Safety Meeting because of the trash, the loud noise, the fires, the coarse language, the, what one gentleman said tonight, that people are using the woods behind the Alboron Apartments as their own personal dumping grounds and for a restroom. These are things that, just, you know, having respect for our neighbors is, you know, that's something that we should all cherish and fight for, and I don't think leaving trash around or urinating in a wooded area is respecting our neighbors. Additionally, they, you know, the marijuana, I mean, that's a different thing, but since, between January 1st of '23 and May 22nd of '25, we had 28 police calls and 42 fire calls to that one address. I mean, that's a struggle. We had a similar thing happen here at Lawren and Hillsdale at the home that's boarded up, basically, that there was an extraordinary number of police calls to that specific address. And these are things that are taxing our resources. And it said most of the fire runs were medical in nature. Additionally, the ladies that were here last time, and I don't know for certain, but that testified that Camp Hope helped them out. I'd been told, and I haven't verified this, and I would appreciate verification, but that they hadn't been there just for weeks, but for years, for the entire time that the camp's been open. And my understanding was it was going to be a temporary solution to help get people back on their feet and off of the streets, out of homelessness. And I know these things take time, which is one of the reasons I have issues with the way that Lifeways addresses the homeless, because they don't give it enough time. But that's a whole different issue. But, you know, more than a couple few months, maybe six months, is just not temporary. And we've extended a lot of grace as far as the legalities of the thing we're concerned, and I really appreciated, you know, council and Bentley encouraging us to just, let's hold Camp Hope accountable for what they promised to do and what should be defined a temporary solution. So, I know Missy said last council meeting, or two council meetings ago, that she's working on a solution, but I also added to the agenda letter I received from the Board of Directors of Share the Warmth, that Share the Warmth of Hillsdale County is also working on a solution to provide a permanent shelter here within the city. And I just wanted you to know that there's other people working towards the same ends, so hopefully if the city can come up, or the residents of the city can provide a way to help these people that have fallen, you know, through choices or circumstances on these hard times. And I welcome any questions or discussion. And Bob, did you have anything to add to that, Senator?
No, I think you've covered it well. Thank you, sir. Anybody else in council need comments or questions regarding that meeting? Okay, thank you, Councilman Soha. Appreciate it. Councilor Mackey?
I guess I'd ask the attorney, where are we stamped? Do we have a date coming up?
I had not received any citation from the district court discussing anything for a hearing, so I don't know if a citation was issued. If one was, I don't know when, because presumably if it was within the last month or so, I would have a hearing date by now. So, as it says right now, nothing has come to me to do anything with.
Mr. Mackey, do you know, can you answer that?
I know that a citation was issued. I have to check with Mr. Beaker to find out where that stands.
Is Mr. Beaker here? Is he not here?
He is not here.
I, it was my understanding, maybe my misunderstanding, the last meeting that the process was beginning as of the last meeting. A process, I don't know.
Well, if it was at the last meeting and they issued a citation, it depends when it gets served. So, the police have to serve it first, and then it goes through the district court at that point. So, that, if it was just at the last meeting, it would just be that I had a receipt yet. Usually it takes a few weeks before the court schedules it for hearing and sends that notice to me.
Forgive me. I meant the last meeting, I believe, that you were at, so two meetings ago.
But I can't tell you because I don't know. I don't issue the citations. I only get them when I get them from the court. It tells me we have a hearing set.
So, I guess my question is, do we have to take any action as council tonight to get anything?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Matt, I think with Dave saying that the citation has been issued, the process has started, but just where we are in that process, maybe we can make an update at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. We get one from Mr. Beaker at the next meeting. Anybody else have any questions? Councilman Burns?
I think, maybe I misunderstood also at the last meeting, what our path forward was going to be. I was under the impression that the ONG committee, what was it, Public Safety? Public Safety committee was going to talk about hard deadlines, but maybe it's too early in the process to suggest anything, deadlines for Missy to come into compliance.
Mr. Mackey?
If I remember correctly from the meeting that we had a discussion, I believe the citation was issued at the end of April. I believe that's correct. And then the discussion was that we were waiting, it was in the process, so it was in the system, and that Tom would eventually receive notice of a court hearing. And then, so we had time to see what was going to happen while we were waiting for that court hearing. And Tom could, we would be at that time to determine what our direction would be.
Councilman Bentley?
Yeah, I think we've figured out it was probably the May 2nd meeting that we're talking about. So, it's been six weeks, I guess. So, surprising, and it demonstrates that the gears of justice were slow, so we'll be patient.
Tom, do you know, is there a general guideline on how long it takes to receive a notification like that historically?
I can't tell you because I don't know whether or not it's been served. Typically, the way that it works is there's a notice that's issued first, and then subsequent, it tells you if being compliant by a certain date. If you're not, then a citation gets issued with the district court. That gets served by usually Detective Martin, so that might take, you know, whatever he can actually serve the people with the defendant with the notice. And then after that, it takes a couple of weeks to the district court process and actually do a hearing date. You should kind of take the office and ask, you know, what would be a good date of the dates that they hold to have a hearing. I did get an inquiry today from the district court asking for some dates in July, so that could be one of the citations. If they don't tell me which to use, maybe I could just go against it and discover. My assumption would be if the process started that far back, pretty soon I should begin something for the district court to schedule it up to July.
Well, I guess I'll ask. Missy, have you been served?
Thank you.
Is this simply yes or no?
Oh, simply yes or no? Oh, I was going to explain to you what was said to me, but no, I have not been served.
Okay, thank you. So, somewhere Matt, in the process still?
But I can explain why.
Okay, if council does not mind, we'll take a quick moment to come up and explain why.
So, from what I understand, the same thing that happened when I was cited at my warehouse, a nonprofit organization is run by a board. You cannot own a nonprofit. The citation that was done in the warehouse, because they said that they, that's besides the point, was put in my personal name. You cannot put a citation for a nonprofit organization in someone's personal name. Now, you can list the organization first and then a resident agent, but you can't put it in a personal person's name. And the same thing happened again with the May 15th citation. So, we'll see what the court does again, if they're going to take me personally to court when I have a board of directors above me. So, we'll see what happens.
The big word, sniff who. So, thank you for the explanation. Appreciate that. Anybody else on council with any questions regarding that Public Safety Meeting? If not, then we will move on to new business. First on the agenda is a resolution for budget amendments. Mr. Mackey, could you explain?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. So, we do this at the same time every year. We do it before the July, July 1, because we have to make sure it matches up our budgets, our budget for the closing out of the year. So, this is our closeout budget amendment list. Some are for the general fund. $108,000 for the general fund. There's $5,800 for TIPA. There's $10,000 that we received in a donation that wasn't expected and used on park improvement. And then the overdreams in Stock's Park. I think this is, I don't know, after that, you see the actual detailed breakdown of what that, what those numbers entail.
So, this is just to basically come June 30th, show us that we had a budget for '24, '25?
'25, '26.
Or '25, '26, right?
Well, '24, '25, and yes, so it is what we have to have in place when we state the orders.
Thank you, sir. Anybody on council with any questions regarding the budget resolutions? Questions on the numbers? Questions on anything at all about that? If not, I would entertain a motion. If a motion. And I have a second. A motion from Councilperson Morrissey to accept the resolution regarding the budget amendments. And I have a second from Councilman Soha. Any further discussion or questions regarding this? If not, Katie, I do believe we need a roll call vote in that.
Yes. Chair Flynn?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Senator?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Something to note, it's Resolution 364.
Thank you very much. Next up on new business, the resolution for the Mission Department of Transportation road diet. I'd ask everybody to take a deep breath, please. You have all been, I'm going to just take a quick second. You've all been very gracious tonight, and I appreciate that. Decorum gets a lot farther than screaming and yelling and throwing things and calling names. You've all done an excellent job tonight. We've done, obviously, our turn. But I appreciate everybody's patience and understanding, and we'll make the process work one way or the other. We'll find out here in just a minute. But Mr. Mackey, if you wanted just to kind of, or Jason wants to kind of run down through, Jason, why don't you come on up and, if you could, give us a quick recap of the meeting that was held last Thursday, June 12th, for those who may not have been able to make it or watch it on video?
Absolutely. Thank you. Our last meeting, we have discussed several things. The first we'd like to talk about is the funding. Funding will come from the city for this project. There was conversation about SADs. SADs are for local streets. There is no funding for SADs or local streets. Also, the funding for this is going to address issues that may not be just right now, some of them are. The parking lot. The parking lot we have currently houses 17 cars. We're projecting it will go up to 47 if I remember correctly. We do have a parking problem in the city. Most of our parking lots are dated, 45 years old. Average parking lot is $45,000 to $55,000. Our match for this project is infrastructure that we're going to try to improve on. Besides the parking lot, it's going to be the brick, all the brick they see on the furniture zone from Carlton all the way to Bacon Street. That has been dated as well. That was put in as a 2000 street skate. Most of that is sold and going out there is that the city's cost to replace those. Again, not right now, but the next couple of years that's going to be done. There is some areas that need to be done as well. Cook Street, Cook Street needs a full reconstruction, about $200,000 to $300,000. For the four residents there, that would be a special assessment program. We, our thought was the best to vacate that property and put about $20,000 into that to put a parking lot, oh, sorry, a direct approach and to heal in the curb on the highway there, $30,000, again on Wald Street as well. So, funding course on that is to really help some infrastructure that we're investing as well.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? I know council probably has a few that they would like to ask as well. We had a gentleman ask about Cook Street, and I have a little cut in to try to put in. Will that be a one-way?
No, it will be widened up from two foot with in and out.
Okay.
It'll be 24-foot wide.
Okay. And secondly, I had a constituent ask me over the weekend, because it really hasn't been brought up, but between Bacon and Steambird with the, I'm going to call it a skateboard lane, you know, but will there be parking then put in on that section of Steambird? If we're narrowing down to one lane in each direction, center turn lane, bike lanes, like the downtown area here, will there be on the other side of Bike Lane? Will there be parking available on Broad Street?
So, there is an option to go all the way on Steambird, parking on both sides of the road. That would be above and beyond what we're asking for the grant, because that will be additional funds needed. We'll help the city out to do that. But it is an option.
So, that is an option. Actually, you have parking on Broad Street.
On both sides?
Okay, okay. Councilperson Burns?
One of my big hangups on this is the funding, maybe this is a little question for Mr. Mackey, is there no other fund that we can pull from to pay the city's share in order to get the grant?
It would come, it has to come out of our capital improvement fund, which is typically what we either do use for road projects or other building projects. So, it would come out of there. Some of it might come out of roads. Our 204 road fund is where it would actually be paid out, and that's also what we pay for our road projects.
So, how is it maneuvered that TIPA? My understanding is that we're splitting it 50/50, the match with TIPA, at least in proposals that I've seen. Is that right?
I, yes, that has been a proposal that's out there and been discussed, but I've also heard that TIPA's not in a position to actually fund their half. I'm not certain of that, but I have heard that, so. And we're looking at, if the numbers hold true to what the estimates are, it's about $200,000 that our share would be, whether it's the city and TIPA or the city on its own.
Okay, thank you. I mean, yeah, I can't go for this myself until that's resolved. I'd be very hesitant to spend money out of the capital improvement fund on this. And if TIPA's money is up in the air, that makes me even more concerned about it.
Councilperson Wolf?
During the earlier discussion, there wasn't a mention of that we're going to get somewhere around $800,000, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
From the state?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just wanted to let people know. This is also going to add $800,000 to the city.
Yes, sir.
So, the total project with all the improvements is anticipated to be $1 million, and we have to contribute 20%, so that's where the $800,000 comes in.
Councilperson Benton?
This isn't really my issue that I have heard people talk about. I don't know. The Councilman Burns brings it up again. So, TIPA doesn't have the money? And I think I also understood you to say that it's coming out of our road funds, which... So, that, yes, that's, I just, once we're there, that's what I'll mention. That's incredible.
So, Jason, could you explain, because I'm a little fuzzy too, the 204 road fund, is that for local streets or is that, because I know you have different columns of money for different streets in town?
So, 204 can be used in major local streets either way. So, this project could be enjoyed for multiple. It can be 204, which is major local. It could come out of 101, which is the general fund, which a lot of these will come out of the general fund for the parking lot. It's a 101 account. So, a lot of this isn't just in the road fund. It's going to be a general fund on the capital account.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
If I may, one thing I'd like to point out too, our match is $200,000, but one thing we got to remember, this is $200,000 of our own infrastructure we're putting in. It's not $200,000 you're going to grant just to put a road diet in. This is $200,000 up to that we're going to put in for our own infrastructure. That's the way I, that's the way I see it anyway, and I look at it. You know, we definitely need to start somewhere in infrastructure, not just local streets, major streets, but our parking lots as well in our downtown.
Mr. Benton?
I would challenge that no one on council understands what you just kind of explained. Like, we don't have that granular understanding of what we are getting for our money. It's been presented to us consistently as a take it or leave it package. And you also just mentioned that there are options for parking on Broad Street? And I may have heard on Thursday that there's going to be sidewalks along the fence. Is that? No?
I've never heard that, sir, about the sidewalk. I've heard it too at the last meeting, but that never came through us.
Yeah, there are just so, so many questions that, again, I don't understand. And the Cook Street, I have so many things, this will be disjointed, so I, you know, if anybody wants to go first, I don't need to. The Cook Street Egress, is that up by the intersection?
It'll be about 100, about 100 foot to the east. Of course, that would be quite, yeah.
So, closer to the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't, there's nothing in the packet, again, for our second meeting in a row. Mr. Beaker is not here. Why is Mr. Beaker not here?
I'm assuming he chose not to be here. I do not know why.
Jason seems to be following this fairly closely, but it appears to me, and may be I'm wrong, that Mr. Beaker is, has been the quarterback for this the whole time and has been the negotiator with M.D. and the decider, the only decider in our whole town, as far as I can tell. I don't know that the planning commission or TIPA got their hands dirty with this. I don't know that Mr. Mackey understands the nuts and bolts of it. It seems to be just Mr. Beaker, and for the second crucial meeting in a row, including the one that we're scheduled to vote, Mr. Beaker's not here.
I would say on his behalf, at the Thursday's meeting, he did mention, and then again, I'm not speaking for him or others, repeating what he said, was that since 2013, he's just basically following... repeating what he said, was that since two thousand thirteen, he's just basically following the directive of the Tifa, of the planning commission and the councils at that time. Yes, it's his job, but if he's told, as he mentioned earlier this year, if you want him to stop, just say stop, he would. But over the past twelve years, as he put it last Thursday, nobody's told him to stop. It's been a unanimous vote every single time, so he takes that as, okay, they want me to keep going, so he just keeps going. So I don't know if, you know, he's doing it on his own, he's just basically doing what he's been told. Is what the way he put it last Thursday.
Thank you, there's something to that. I might characterize it differently. The meeting in December of twenty-three, which, you know, I hear this ten years talk, but for all practical, practical purposes, this process began when he requested to do the traffic study for thirteen thousand dollars in December of twenty-three. And then, as far as I've seen, the council didn't deal with it again until they dealt with it for, if I remember correctly, four minutes, June of twenty-four. And they, they just waved it through, nobody was involved. And certainly, as I say, the public didn't know, and to address one of the points of Mr. Robson, my ignorance upon taking the seat, I would say is a demonstration of the people don't, didn't know, I believe, Bob Chair, Councilman Flynn?
Bob Flynn.
That, that you also didn't know, and you brought it up in December when we were talking about parking for the Kiefer. That's the first time it came to your attention and my attention, is that right?
That's the way I remember it, yes.
If you expect the median citizen of Hillsdale to be more informed than Bob Flynn, you're mistaken. Again, I don't know that I have any more questions for you, Jason, so thank you. I may. Because this is my favorite, so.
Jason, while you're standing, though. So ignoring that information, could you kind of recap what's going to happen here at the corner of Carlton and, and Broad? I've had a lot of people ask, is it going to be easier to cross there than it is now? Is there going to be different signage? Is there going to be different lights? What is going to happen down here to try to make pedestrians? Because again, we just had five hundred people show up over the weekend on the train. And I understand it's a Saturday afternoon, Sunday afternoon, not as busy traffic, but still, it's like playing Frogger out there at times to get across. So what is going to happen down here if approved?
Absolutely, so I'd like to start, if this intersection is the bottleneck right now that we have in the city, it essentially is three lanes, one southbound, two northbound, sorry, one northbound, one eastbound. So to, to help alleviate that, I'm trying to go away from it, so I apologize. We're going to extend the radius out on this side, so semis can make the right hand turn. It will be the buffer lane, bicycle lanes. So pedestrians will not have to frogger, if you will, through four lanes of traffic. There's going to be buffer space that they can, which should not be occupied, or will not be occupied, should not be occupied by vehicle traffic. To accommodate the left turn lane there and the pedestrians, bicycle, the traffic lights are going to go up at the intersection as well, and timing as such. Now this one, there is going to be a lag on this one, and again, it's already a lag now. It's about, I think we heard in the meeting, seven to fourteen seconds, if I remember right. So this is going to be the bottleneck regardless of what we do. Anything else on that one?
No, 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 I just couldn't remember what all was going to happen right now.
Oh, gotcha.
Anybody else have anything, councilman, well, let's go with Councilman Sutcliffe.
I just wanted, the MDOT meeting we had last week, I just want to thank everybody in the city who was there. When people came to the meeting, I thought it was very well done. I thought the cards for question was a great idea, because it took emotions out, because you just heard the question. But not a lot of banked up voices. And Chief did an excellent job, Jason, and Alan did a great job answering all the questions. There's a lot of misunderstanding, it's obvious, a lot of misunderstanding how this project works. But my biggest thing, make me think, this council at one time, safety was the number one priority for the city. We want to make sure our citizens were safe and had all the right, what would make us safe. This system out here is not safe. And I got to believe, I mean, what I've seen and talking to the chief, it's a much safer system when you're making left-hand turns. Pedestrians walking across the street, yes, God forbid, we're going to be a few more seconds later and it's going to be a little slower and more congested. Oh, God forbid, we can't get there in another three seconds faster. It's, we're not brain service, folks. I mean, we don't have to be someplace that quick. So I think we're overlooking the overall safety factor of this, this project. I mean, it's crucial to our downtown, it applies economic development, walkability, all of these good things. So we're getting lost in a lot of emotion.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Ben.
To address some of Councilman Sutcliffe's points, those of us who are strongly against the road diet do not concede that we are giving up the safety. We have grave concerns that we are putting some at risk. And we are not responsible for the accidents that have happened and will happen unless we were directly involved. But if council does this drastic change, and there, as one of the public said, there's a bike, I believe it was Mayor Sessions, maybe, and there's a bike incident out there, like if this goes south, that is on this council's conscience. And to address the meeting, in our previous meeting, June second, we spent, according to my calculations, all at fifteen minutes discussing the upcoming public forum. And we talked about it at the library, as being at the library and getting a podium there for the public to come and speak into the microphone, and various other things. The vast majority of the fifteen minutes was about the logistics of the meeting. The meeting that actually happened on Thursday bore no resemblance to our discussion. We are city council. We are supposed to, we are, it's our responsibility to, to do these things and to have them carried out in the way we discuss. And we all seem to understand each other. Mayor Protem, city manager Mackey, the attorney, Lovinger, was sitting in. And the misinformation that, that we engaged in, and that was on YouTube, and that were perhaps most of the citizens, you know, learn their information, because for watching us, I don't know if that's true, but they were misinformed. And then we had a series of emails from, I believe, three or four from the city manager and one from the attorney. And the attorneys contradicted the city managers and the attorney after patronizingly telling Bob it's the open meeting. And the email to, well, no, you have to run it as a council meeting. And then in the event, there was none of the above. So there's grave questions about whether public service, the public notice aspect of that meeting was legitimate. And the, what's it called? I'm not a lawyer, I'm not, I believe it's the Administrative, oh, I have it somewhere here. The Administrative Procedures Act, I believe. Whether any of that was, so I don't know if, if I'm not, might have an opinion about that. They're not here again, but we didn't expect them, but I don't know if that meeting was legitimate. There was nothing about this in this packet, and the website, as I saw it, the ten slides remain the ten slides that they always were. They're still up there, I, but closely, but I saw Cook Street and the police parking lot, the same as it's always been. So we hear about these adjustments. Jason mentioned that there are still options. I don't know how there's going to be, how there's options still, if we're expected to vote on the plan that none of us understands. So spoiler, what I'm going for here is to delay the vote, for, and I'll lay out my reasons. One of them is because Mayor Protem is not here, and that seems important, it's very important. And it needs a signature resolution, I guess that can wait or not, I don't know. But I'd like his voice and his vote on this issue. I guess one of my biggest hangups is that we were told by manager Mackey and Beaker, we've been told a number of times that the deadline is June thirtieth. And then at the Thursday meeting with the little written cards, somebody asked, why is the deadline June thirtieth? MDOT had no idea what that was about. That's arbitrary. Is it a lie? It seems like a lie. We were, we were told that's why we had to rush that Thursday meeting, and that certainly had a lot to do with the way the meeting went. And we had to rush this vote because of the deadline. And I believe, manager Mackey, maybe you would like to concede the fact that is, there is no June thirtieth deadline?
I don't have an answer to your question, councilman. Because I, as you know, I wasn't at the meeting and I did not hear the discussion on that. But my understanding is June thirtieth was the deadline, and that's why we happened on this agenda, and that's why we had last Thursday's meeting.
So it's your contention, excuse me, it's your contention that you don't know where the June thirtieth deadline came? Because I have the email of June third, the day after our meeting, and here's one of your lines. "There is no ability to change the date because of the tight timeline we are on with the final grant submission of June thirtieth."
Yes, and that is what Mr. Beaker has relayed to us, and that's what was relayed to him by the state. Now, if the state did not stick with that on last Thursday, that's another question, but our understanding is June thirtieth is the deadline.
Interesting, yes, now, no, not only did MDOT, they, they were baffled, they had no idea what it was talking about. Because I'll remind everyone, ground is to be broken in spring of twenty twenty-seven. There is no rush. We can wait, we can understand it better, the people can understand it better, Mayor Protem can be here. There is no reason to vote on this tonight. Let me respond to some of the comments from the public, starting with, I believe, Mr. Robson. He took issue with, oh, and by the way, I would like to, since it's come up two or three times, my editorial, which is a response to his op-ed, and the Hillsdaleian, I'd like them both entered into the, to the minutes, or however you do such things, Katie. Thank you. The political legitimacy, I concede from his perspective, because he is well informed and he is a stakeholder, it's seen from the outside, and, and his staff has said all along, we're checking the boxes according to MDOT's dictates. What I mean by political legitimacy is that the staff has been hiding the ball, certainly for the six months since I voiced my opposition to this. And I have a long litany of such malfeasance. The three accidents that Mr. Robson mentioned, I don't think I remember all three of them. The chief of police on the Thursday meeting said that the snowplow incident, there was no corroboration of a big truck running off the Hillsdale County snowplow into those three parked cars. And there were no injuries. And this Friday incident, I talked to Cass Chief about that. I don't have a full understanding, but the abbreviated version is that someone ran a red light. So that happens, that will continue to happen. That doesn't have anything to do with the road ad either. To address Mr. Moore, well, I found it interesting that Mr. Robson did not voice his objection to my use of the word arrogant. But Mr. Moore took great offense at it. I would only say, if the shoe fits. He mentioned that I used arbitrary in some context. Let me read you the context. "They did not request to have the major artery," they, the people, "they did not request to have the major artery through town arbitrarily constricted for the imagined benefit of an arrogant few, who mean to oppose their vision of a bright, beautiful boutique future, regardless of the lives of the actual current residents of the Hillsdale area." Arbitrarily constricted, it is arbitrarily constricted to slow down traffic. Other municipalities, Ms. Hardway, Mrs. Hardway addressed that. You asked the people that pushed for and wanted the traffic calming plans. Mr. Soha spoke to a number of them. Surprise, the people who benefit from it will say they like it. The people don't like it, as she demonstrated in Coldwater, to my satisfaction, anyway. Tifa money, oh, yes, Mr. Veer talked about the Tifa money, and we find out tonight that Tifa doesn't have the money. That's a strange thing that I'm going to leave in Mr. Brunz's capable hands. Mrs. Wolfram had very nice comments about the beauty of Hillsdale and the history of Hillsdale. And I, I wholeheartedly agree, this is a nice, beautiful place, and it's always had Broad Street. Somebody was talking about it, I guess Mrs. Wolfram here also, cutting, the highway was cutting through. MDOT's going to do what MDOT does, and when they claim their road and call it a highway, and it's a truck route, we don't have the ability to override that. It will remain the truck, a truck route out of Michigan Highway. Somebody mentioned litigation, and I've heard such rumors also. The people are very, very upset with this, and.
This is filibuster, because you don't want to go today.
I don't know.
Well, let's get to a point. If nobody will ever be pointing to be going, this is, let's move on, let's get to.
Boo!
No, let him talk.
Let him talk.
People want to hear them.
A filibuster lacks content. I'm trying to bring some content.
Don't be so emotional.
If you would please, we appreciate, thank you.
With all due respect, Councilman Soha, I would ask you to recuse yourself from this vote if we have it tonight, which I hope we don't. I would like to quote you from the December twenty twenty-three council meeting when Mr. Beaker requested this. This is Councilman Soha. "I'd just like to make a statement. Living on South Broad Street, cars are always racing to make the light, and I've screamed at them more than once. But I mean, they're up to fifty, sixty miles an hour by the time they pass my house, and motorcycles too. And having a single-lane traffic where they're going to be stymied by a tractor trailer or something else is very attractive to me. So the reason I ask you to consider recusing is because you expressed an emotional, very personal emotional benefit and presumed financial benefit for your property value on South Broad." Um, uh, yes, when we were talking about this at the Blackberry meeting in January, the numbers we were hearing then were uh, we would pay 20%, and the total was $395,894. I don't know how it got to a million dollars. I don't know if council did that. I don't remember when or how that might have happened. Again, to reiterate my main point, there is no urgency. We ought not vote tonight. I would like to understand the plan better, and I move that we table the resolution until a further meeting.
So we have a motion, a second, and a second, to table the vote for tonight. Uh, Councilman Stucho.
Just question to the city manager, can we do, do we have the time for him to do this, to, to table it?
Again, my understanding is that we have to, according to him, uh, approve or not approve it by June 30th. And if we want to have another meeting, you could do it, get a special meeting.
Jason's the person. Sorry, Jason, can you corroborate for me that, uh, M.D.O. had no idea what June 30th was? And Beaker gave a full concession that that was not real, that it was an internal deadline?
So, I think how it came, and again, I, I'm gonna call M.D.O., and I, I already went and talked about this, but I know for design and bid lighting, that was, forgive me, I could go over set off grades, because I didn't talk to him, Alan did. Um, but I think Jim Terrier's deadline makes sure we can hit a designed bid lighting, which bid lighting will, we have to come out with this project here to be 20 seconds of that project. That's what I think.
Thank you. And again, I need to point out, Mr. Beaker is not here at this most crucial time, and he was not here at the last crucial time, which was a previous meeting, I believe. And we're told that we had to have that M.D.O. meeting on Thursday, and that we have to vote today, and those are not true. And Mayor Protam is not here.
Uh, Mr. Brunz?
Uh, sorry, Jason, I just didn't quite catch what you said, a designed bid?
Designed for, for design and bid lighting. So M.D.O.'s gonna do all the engineering on this project as well. So it has to be engineering to put out a bid lighting, uh, that probably will happen in springtime to, uh, to, uh, get a contract kind of worth of 2027. Um, and, and again, one thing to, um, um, we can talk with Alan, I just want to get back. But I do know some of this is really like falling on me going forward. As this comes off Alan and Tifa and the design phase, this is gonna be more on Department of Public Services. So that might be why Alan's not here as well, because they will fall on my shoulders, or the city's more than on the plan.
No, Jason, you, uh, you're taking on more jobs all the time. Is it true that Mr. Beaker is on the verge of retirement?
Um, the answer to that is he will be retiring, um, soon.
Jason, while you have a quick minute, before we go on to motion, um, so we have a motion on the floor. Just to answer a couple of other questions from the audience, uh, that were brought up at the June 12th meeting. Uh, a couple of people mentioned, uh, trying to lower the speed limit. Uh, one gentleman asked about putting a traffic light at Hallett Street. M.D.O. said no to all of that, because even I asked those questions. Uh, could you give a brief recap as to why? Cause I know it has something to do with state legislation and things like that.
Absolutely. Um, I'm just writing this down real quick. Um, so real quick to go back to your question, um, about this intersection right here. To help alleviate the bottleneck, the proposal was to put two left turn lanes in there as well. So as traffic gets down here to help alleviate that 14 seconds, which we can, there would be two left turn lanes to go north around on traffic. Um, so the lower the speed, the lower the speed is done by 85th percentile in the state, it's all across the federal. So 85th percentile, this street will not be 30 miles an hour across the town, it's gonna be like 45, 50.
And what do you mean by 85th percentile?
So, eh, the speed of 85 on 100 people, that's gonna be the same, that's what it's gonna be at.
So if they're speeding through town at 40 miles an hour, 85% of them, then M.D.O.'s gonna say, that's the speed the traffic needs to move in that area?
Yeah, so Michigan State Police will do that study. It goes to that, that has, that's how it goes through, but, um, they'll never go down, they'll be
And a traffic light in Hallett Street?
So traffic lights, and Chief Hector can answer this on our meeting as well. Um, it's only gonna slow them down so they get there and stop and speed back up again. There's such a lag between there and here's a gap to make, and there, they're just gonna be back up to speed again. Um, again, years ago, we had one there, a blinking light, we had it for the fairgrounds as well. Um, I, that's not the answer, that, that's gonna fix that problem of speed. Um, it was brought up also for, um, do cameras, the tape cameras, uh, those are illegal in the state of Michigan. We can't do those through the Michigan Legislature, which brought up at that meeting as well. Uh, was there a couple of other questions you could think of?
I cannot. Does anybody else have any questions for Jason? Mr. Beth?
Yes, thank you. Um, Jason, I, I'm still struggling to understand the basic structure of, of the million dollars. Is it fair to say that so they're, they're going to repave, and one way or another, they're going to stripe or restripe on their dime? That's all on their dime?
Yes, sir.
So the million dollars, my, do I understand correctly that the million dollars goes to this silly Waldron Budlong non-fix? Closing off Cook Street, putting in the egress, the two-way, which you quoted as $8,000, and fixing the triangle parking lot? Is that where our million dollars is going?
So remember too, it's, the road diet is gonna come around City Hall and all your Oak Street as well. So all that, including the brick going to downtown, it's gonna replace all the handles for electric, electric and irrigation in the downtown system. Um, there's more on that as well than just that.
Wow, that's encouraging. It's gonna go all the way to Oak Street, because I've heard a proposal that's Oak Street to McCullum. I wonder if M.D.O. would be interested in Oak Street to McCullum as part of their walkable, bikeable, big, beautiful corridor. So I would like to explore that further too, because I believe that opening up the corridor between Oak Street and McCullum would bring large benefits to everyone, and then, you know, also presumably if we could fix Ferris Street into something other than a ghetto, and have ingress, egress, that corridor between McCullum and Oak would alleviate this intersection 30%, 25%, I think Hillsdale, coming down Hillsdale, people would, would prefer to go that way. Be that as it may, there's, and the Rotary Park is gonna be there now, and anyway, consider, consider the corridor and the benefits that may come from it. And, but I'm curious right now, that it touches M.D.O.'s projects, so they might be interested. But back to my question, is the million dollars going to Budlong Waldron, closing Cook Street, and the post office parking lot? Does that give us $100,000?
No, that's part of this as well.
Which?
The, the road diet going to Oak Street, because that, the, the string is gonna be all the way around us, because it's not the highway.
Oh, the repaving or whatever?
The repaving or the, this would be on us, correct.
I see. From, from Broad, from land intersection to Oak Street?
Yes, sir.
I see. Does that mean anything major? It doesn't even, it doesn't even occur to me that that's the top anything for our needs of repaving. It seems to be in good shape. I don't know what the infrastructure underneath is.
It's rated a two on the major scale. It, it, it's a full reconstruct. It's got storm issues on both sides of the road.
Okay, so No, 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 please.
Um, we tried to get a grant to actually fix and restore that road the last couple of years as well. I mean, we were successfully getting that grant.
Yeah, no, so, but is the outline of the structure that I'm laying out, is that, is that about right? We, we're, we're letting them put in the bike lanes, and in return, we have a million dollars to play with that Mr. Beaker seemingly, seemingly unilaterally chose to put into Budlong Waldron, clo- just closing Cook Street apparently, so I don't know why that costs more than 10 grand. And the parking lot, and then a little paving on Carlton to the west, east. Is that right?
So, if I may, a lot of those closures actually was made, and then the, the Waldron Street, uh, the Cook Street, those came from the, Alan had nothing to do with those. He just threw them in there. Um, so again, it's all in a hole, it's, it's a piece rate that's going through that, it's just that million dollars.
Yes, but my, my question is, M.D.O. came with this proposal, put in bike lanes, we'll restripe the road for you, and we'll give you $800,000, and you match it with 200, and do with it as you please. Is that basically what the story is?
No, a lot of it was because it has to be non-dispated, uh, pedestrian based. That's why we did the parking lot over there with the Biggs Drive Group, it was over there. Which would help solve the, the, it was a non-motorized road, and then also, um, helped improve the parking in the downtown.
Okay, I, I, but you're not really refuting my assertion that a million dollars, 200 of ours, 800 of theirs. You, and thank you very much for taking ownership of the Budlong Waldron and the Cook Street. Uh, just arbitrarily chose, nobody had counsel, was consulting, like, you, you guys, like, it fit the constraints of the million dollars, and so you chose to add those projects to it essentially?
Yeah, so I chose them because over the amendments that we do on the highway through our staff, through BDU staffer, there was logistically, they at least put in the grade to see what could happen.
Councilman Bentley?
There's a, there's a motion and a second that we need to address. If we can to have a vote on that moving forward, I appreciate it.
Okay, so, okay, thank you, sir. So we do have a motion on the floor, uh, made by Councilman Bentley to table tonight's vote on the, uh, road diet resolution and push it back to the July 7th meeting. Well, let me take that back, just to table it. We have not decided if we're going to push it back to the July 7th meeting or have a special meeting between here and there. We have a second from Councilman Brunz. Mr. Bentley?
Forgive me, uh, last point. Um, in the interim, I would like to send it to an ad hoc committee made up of Councilman Flynn and myself, and perhaps Mr. Robson, and, uh, the chief of police, and maybe, uh, Mr. Gelford, for instance.
I think before we decide that, we need to decide on the motion.
Right.
And then we, then we can talk about that later.
Uh, okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
But to, to my point of like, I'm not just tabling it to do nothing, I would, I'd like
I understand, I understand, but the motion is to disable the meeting for the vote for tonight in a second. Um, so, Katie, we'll take a roll call vote, please, on the tabling of the votes on the road diet resolution. Oh, wait, hold on there. Final clarification, Mr. Soha.
And just yes means we're tabling it, no means we're not.
Correct. A yes vote means that we will table the mo- the table the vote until further notice, and then we'll get to that here in a minute. Katie, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Soha?
No.
Stucho?
No.
Wolfram?
No.
Bentley?
Yes.
Brunz?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
No.
It's 4-3, and that fails.
So that means we will, if we get a motion, then we will vote on the road diet resolution tonight, unless another motion is made to do something else. Councilperson Stucho?
Oh, I, I just wanted to make a motion to
I just haven't said anything yet before motion, so I
Okay, Councilman Soha?
So, thank you. Um, so, yes, I said that, I stand by what I said. Um, Tom, would you speak to my legal, uh, I mean, I, I must vote on this, I'm required to go on this.
You have duty to vote. You don't have any kind of legal conflict that prevents you to vote, so you have a duty to vote.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, so, yeah, so Councilman Stucho mentioned it, um, one of the young men, Josh, mentioned it about him living there, and public safety. Uh, I just wanted to be known, three weeks ago, I almost, I almost hit a man, uh, getting out of his car right in front of St. Anthony's, um, because I was in the right-hand lane, and I have a big SUV, and I had a big SUV right next to me, and we left the light. I was only doing about 20 miles an hour. Um, but my 6,000 pound vehicle, you know, you don't walk away from that, right? And, um, he opened his door and got out of his car. I was right on top of him. I had to stand on my brakes. Um, thankfully, I wasn't distracted. I was that close. And he stared at me as if I was in the wrong, um, which I find incredulous, but nevertheless, public safety has been one of my, I mean, that's why I've been on the public safety committee, the, my entire time as a counselor. Um, this is why I, you know, voted to keep people from sleeping in our public spaces. Um, because I find that of paramount importance. But I, I'm, I'm really, um, I mean, it's overwhelmingly 14 to four here at the meeting. You know, for and against, and, um, I would love to have a protected left turn going into my house, so I'm not rear-ended one day. And I would love to have a buffer downtown, uh, for the pedestrian, or for the people who are peril at Broad Street. Um, so that they have an extra few feet, um, you know, the conjecture of a bicycle accident, or the conjecture of, even me with the conjecture that somebody's, it's just a matter of time before some kid runs out between the cars on Sunday at St. Anthony's, and, um, you know, accidents happen, and I, I pray to God I'm wrong in that. But, um, I've seen so many close calls over the years. Um, but I have to take in consideration, two of my neighbors on Broad Street were opposed to it adamantly. And, um, I gotta take into consideration, it was suggested that, um, the money, you know, the $200,000 coming out of the general fund or the road fund, you know, and we have all these other roads that we need to, and that we need to address in the city that are failing, and um, if council's not aware, the state of Michigan is gonna pay and strike Broad Street, whether we do this or not. It'll just maintain its same form, and, uh, we won't get the parking lot, and we won't get this part of Carlton, um, to the east here. And, um, I, you know, that makes me think of a lot of the arguments about traffic and safety, and, um, it just shocks me at how selfish we are as a culture. Where we're worried about 30 seconds. Um, and I'm not talking about us individually, I just mean it's our general culture. It's the culture of the United States. You get out in the interstate, especially in the major metropolitan areas, and people are zipping by you at 80, 90 miles an hour, with a speed level of 65 or 70. So we, we just have this fast food, do it my way culture, and having a protected left turn lane would be born at the last minute dodging to avoid it. Um, I like the idea of that. But, um, and, you know, for the city to readdress it, or the state to come back to us, you know, it's gonna be another generation before, before that happens if we don't implement this now. And so I have all those things to consider. Um, I, I don't like the idea of $200,000 coming out of the general fund to pay for this when we're assessing special assessment districts for our, you know, our neighbors, and, um, I, when I learned that, I guess I hadn't understood it fully before. But that's been, that's been really a difficult thing for me to go in favor of. Um, and the art, some of the arguments here, if not persuading me, but they're definitely persuading me, I guess they are persuading me. Um, the Tifa board, um, doesn't have any money right now, so much so that Mr. Weir came up and said he applied for a grant for his facade, and the Tifa board, I was on the Tifa board, these grants are up to ten thousand dollars, up to fifty percent of the cost of the facade, and, um, to Mr. Weir's point, that Tifa, the Tifa board's funded through the property taxes of the businesses in the Tifa district, which was defined by council years ago, and, um, he was awarded six thousand dollars to fix his twenty thousand dollar project, um, and that was all the money that Tifa had for my understanding. And then, you know, with things that are happening, and Tifa having paid off its loans, they're supposed to have money, again, starting next year, maybe, but the Tifa board would have to vote to appropriate the funds, and then again, it was suggested here tonight, well, maybe it was Mr. Weir, I don't remember, um, the Tifa can only spend the funds over in the district, so I guess you could say if we're going, you know, Carlton here and the parking lot, if those two hundred thousand dollars, or hundred thousand dollars was spent there, but I don't know, it just seems, um, I, 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 I just, I cannot, not after all the further information I received tonight, I can't, I can't spend two hundred thousand dollars out of, out of the city's funds when the road's gonna get repaid for free, and that's, that's where I stand.
Thank you to Councilman Soha. So we are, anybody else have anything they'd like to say in regards to the road, Councilperson Wolf, uh, Morse?
Yeah, I, I, I was leaning against this, but I'm, I'm, I'm just doing the opposite of what Councilman Soha was saying. I'm in favor of it because, um, these road diets have been around for forty-five years now, and they've been extensively studied. The statistics or the data already are pretty firm on them, which is that they do substantially reduce the number of collisions in when you have a road diet. Nearly, nearly twen, uh, twenty percent in large cities, and over forty percent in smaller cities. So, uh, the, the, the money that we would spend would, would go to traffic safety. The other arguments I'm not too impressed with, but that one is the decisive one for me.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson Stutel.
I just want to add to that, like, like Mr. Soha said, he almost killed a man, and I gotta believe that if he would have, his vote would be different tonight, over two hundred thousand dollars. The thing is, we're blessed, we're blessed that nobody has been killed. And we've all seen, I think we've all seen people close calls, and there was a time in my career, I was a safety director killing North America. The number one thing you did when you had an unsafe condition was try to engineer it out. That's what this road diet does, it helps engineer out unsafe conditions. Nobody wants to see anybody get hurt, even if you're against this road diet, I know that, but you're gonna engineer out potential, you're gonna reduce potential of somebody getting seriously injured if not killed. I just think it's a blessing that it hasn't happened yet.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anybody else with any comments? Councilperson Wolfram.
Yes, I think it's very important that we go ahead and do this road diet for a number of reasons, but one, which we already talked about, how it improves the safety. Two, is we're gonna get eight hundred thousand dollars from the state to help to, to do the project. Um, and I think that it's very important that we actually improve the, the quality of downtown, and I think that this will, in fact, improve the quality of downtown, as Luke pointed out earlier. You don't have this noise coming through, you don't have people, uh, you know, you, you can't hear because you're, you know, at, at, you know, some, some restaurant or something like that, and there's all this noise coming through. Um, but I do think it'll make it so that the, will improve the, um, people shopping downtown as well. And I think it'll really help the property, the property values in downtown.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfram, Councilman Bentley.
Yes, I'd just like to address a couple things Councilman Wolfram said. Again, we don't concede that it will be safer. And we also would like the downtown to blossom, just not at, at the expense of South of Bacon. If, if we could find solutions for the downtown to calm traffic, I would be open to that. I would not sacrifice South of Bacon all the way to Steamer, uh, for a farce, um, sorry.
For a farce, everyone understands what's a farce.
That bike lanes or parking are necessary between Steamer and Bacon.
Bike lanes aren't necessary at all, except for the state's funding.
Great, that, that's why I meant that farce.
And also, uh, to that point, um, a lot, a lot, pretty much every argument is conjecture, right? Nobody knows for certain, except, uh, Mr. Robson's station points about other communities, and, and, um, I, to Mrs., um, Parkway, who did I, I'll, I don't have that with me, but I, I'll, I'll give that to you. So who I talked with, and what communities. But, yeah, I, I mean, I, yeah. I, I, I really think your, your opposition is misguided. Um, I really believe the road diet would be a benefit to the city and the community, but with so many of my own constituents and my neighbors disagree with me, uh, just tonight, I have a hard time imposing my rule over theirs, so.
Thank you, Councilman Soha. Councilman Morse.
One thing that is not conjectural of the data that the Federal Highway Administration has collected over the years of these, these diets, seventeen percent reduction in collisions in major cities, and forty-seven percent in smaller municipalities.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, Councilman Wolfram?
I just have a, have a question. Um, when would the next cycle be for, uh, the, um, grants?
I'm sorry, I know I mentioned it, I apologize.
Councilman Bentley?
I have a partial answer. Uh, the way I heard M. Dot say it, there's no pressure at all. I, I got the impression, I might gonna quote them as saying this, but if this went on into the winter, if our discussions, like, that they were not breathing down our necks, and the, the gentleman that runs the department, uh, he said, oh, never mind, let's, let's get on that.
Yes, Council, Councilman Stutel.
If the thirtieth is out to date, can we postpone the meeting and have a special meeting on the thirtieth if we need it? If there's a deadline that's out there in August, then we can continue on and pull this team together, take another look at it. I mean, right now I'm under the impression the thirtieth is, is the deadline.
That is the impression that I have. Um, now, whether it would change any decision the council makes is, is another question, and whether or not, uh, this would foresee an impact.
I guess I would ask if we could entertain yet another motion to table, if we've already shot down a motion to table. Can you have another motion for the exact same thing?
I would say no. I mean, you have some rules that allow for that under particular circumstances.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate that. Change is hard. Everybody hates change. I hate change. Um, many of you in this room may not remember a gentleman by the name of Bud Van Horn. Bud Van Horn ran the funeral home, that used to be Van Horn's, before the Eagle family took over, back in the forties, fifties. He else ran an ambulance out of the back end of that. I always found that ironic, that he was either taking him to the hospital or to his place, so he was making, he was making money regardless. You know, smart man, Bud Van Horn. Um, but he petitioned the city back in the day, and I don't remember exactly when, to turn Manning Street and West Street into one-way streets, before then they were two-way. His thinking was that he had Manning Street one-way to the hospital, his ambulance wouldn't have to stop and worry about uncoordinated traffic. And he could also pull out the back end of his funeral home onto West Street and make that one-way to wherever he needed to go. Um, there was a lot of opposition against it then, but it was passed, and people got used to it. Um, I'm not saying that it was the right decision, wrong decision, people got used to it. I remember sitting in that desk right there thirty-ish years ago, and this place was packed with people, uh, in regards to a street project that they wanted to do right over here, and everybody was against it, except for council, council voted yes. And the project got done, they were screaming, they were hollering, they were screaming, pointing, they were calling, um, but people got used to it. I will be brutally honest with you, I had no idea how I was gonna vote on this until two o'clock this afternoon, when I about did the one thing a car salesman should never, ever do, and that's totally destroy a brain-spanked new twenty-twenty-five car that you got on a test drive with a seventy-one-year-old woman. But we were coming southbound, or northbound, apologies, on Broad Street, we came through the light of Bacon, she decided to get over into the inside lane, anticipating that eventually she'd get down here and make the left, which is basically, once you get past McCollum, it's one lane anyway. There's the odd car that goes either to the post office or makes the right into Carlton, but when you look at it, nine cars out of ten are gonna make a left onto Carlton Road, so from McCollum to here, it's one lane anyway, at least coming this way. So she got over. The car, and doing the thirty miles per hour, she slowed down because the light had just turned yellow. The car behind her decided that he didn't wanna wait for that yellow light, nearly pushed us into the intersection, screamed around us, horn a-blankin', finger fine, um, and actually after about four seconds of that light being red, still blew right through that red light. I was hoping there could be a police officer there, there was not, never is, as we always say, never a cop around me anymore. Um, but, and that finger stood outside his window all the way down to City Hall, where he had stopped the red light, so when it turned green, we pulled up right down, and she stumbled out right, yeah. But anyway, so, those things won't happen with this road diet. Um, at least, we hope they won't. My wife almost got ran over Sunday, when traffic is low on Carlton Road, as we were trying to enjoy the train. She knew we were trying to cross, and I, believe it or not, got stuck talking to somebody, so she decided to go ahead and had the right-of-way to cross the four lanes of Carlton, and people decided that they didn't wanna stop at the stoplight and almost pushed my wife. Does it make sense between Bacon and Steamer? Absolutely not. I apologize to those of you who live in that area, I apologize to those of you who live in that area. To me, in my brain, it makes no sense. From Bacon Street to Carlton Road, it makes a hundred percent sense, especially with the parking area over here that we're going to do, the mess that is the traffic around City Hall, I just think, and plus, it's one lane anyway, coming this way. As I mentioned at a meeting, a couple of meetings ago, when we were talking about putting some money away to help fix the streets, um, it may not seem a smart thing to do today, but I think that five years, ten years, twenty years from now, when our down, and I firmly, firmly agree that we're gonna fix our downtown, there will be more businesses, there will be more foot traffic. I, and I know that people say that Hillsdale is dying, and that our population is shrinking, and it, it upsets me when people on council actually quote me numbers saying that we're a dying city. Well, if you don't like the city, then why are you on council? But, you know, I firmly believe, and I have for sixty-three years, that our downtown is gonna come back. It's not gonna be like it was when Pennies and Horses and Sears were here, for those of you who remember, but I firmly believe our city's coming back, and to help with that, this road diet today, to help with it, does it suck? In parts, yes, in parts, no, are you gonna be mad about it? Yep, but we're gonna get used to it, and I honestly believe that after a while, we're gonna see that two days out of the year, it might back up at the Fairgrounds. Two days out of the year. Will it back up at fifteen or twenty seconds? That fourteen seconds that M. Dot made everybody laugh, including me, it's gonna be a little longer, but if it takes you five minutes to get through downtown instead of four, you know, move to Metro Detroit, and try to go a mile, you know, and, and with a fourteen-second delay, ain't gonna happen. Um, I really think that to get what we need for our downtown, you have to unfortunately take some of the stuff that you may not agree with, so. I truly believe in our downtown, and I truly believe that this is going to help. Do we need to take two hundred thousand dollars out of our general fund? Yep. You know, but I'm hoping that, you know, that we get a little more businesses downtown, that's when you bring in increased tax revenue, and we can refill that. Um, I, I kinda actually feel sorry for Mr. Robson, and that pays over a million dollars in property taxes. All of those buildings that he bought downtown, that's uncapped, all of those taxes. So now, he has the joy of being the second highest taxpayer for the city of Hillsdale, right behind mine. Okay? I don't wanna be that guy, you know, but he wouldn't spend one point two or one point three million dollars of his own money if he didn't believe in downtown, and I'm not just saying him, but all those other businesses downtown are paying taxes as well, because they want to be able to see people come back downtown and be in their businesses, spend their money, and help us flourish, and I truly think this will do just that. Now, man, I do wanna say that in all the years I have covered City Hall for WCSR, which has been over forty years, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first protest sign I have seen in council chamber, so I wanna congratulate you for doing so, yeah. We know, we know it's pretty disagree on the contents of your sign, but I just wanna say, can thank you for bringing that, you know, because that's a first, and it shows that we can all be for or against a certain something, we can all be civil, and we can all state our case, and we're not all gonna get what we always want, but this, I think, is gonna be a good thing for the city.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, sir, I'm, I'm sorry.
So I did pull up your council rules, and, um, so you could have someone who was on the side that carried the motion, or in effect, voted no in terms of, um, the motion to table, um, the issue. Once during the meeting, someone who was on that side could make a motion to reconsider whether or not to table it.
So Councilman Stutel, um, since you brought it up, since you voted no the first time, if you would like to reconsider and, and make a motion to table this until we can set a special hearing or something, that is totally up to you, you have the legal opportunity to do that.
No, thank you.
I do not believe, though, that we yet had a motion on the floor to vote on this, do we?
No.
I don't think anybody's made a motion yet, so. I would, I would entertain a motion on the road diet resolution, if somebody would like to make one.
I'll make the motion moving this forward.
I have a second.
I have a motion from Councilman Stutel. I have a motion from Councilman Stutel to vote on the resolution for the Michigan Department of Transportation Traffic Calming Plan and I have a second from Councilman Wolfram. Do I have any other comments, questions, concerns? Councilman Soha?
Councilman Flynn, I really appreciate what you said, it's very persuasive and I, I just wanna on record buy it in favor of this road diet, I think it's good for the city for every reason that Councilman Flynn suggested and more. But like I said earlier, men that live are my neighbors and I represent, have asked me to vote no and so I can't ignore that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? If not, then Katie, a roll call vote please.
Yes, Councilmember Morrissey?
Yes.
Soha?
No.
Stutel?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Bentley?
No.
Brunz?
No.
And Flynn?
Yes.
It's four-three, that's approved. That's resolution three-six-four-two. Four-three, excuse me?
Four-three?
Yes.